October. It is expected that number will rise to 90,000 by the end of the year.
In 2008, the Congress passed and the President signed the William Wilberforce Trafficking Victims Protection Reauthorization Act of 2008 and makes it illegal to send away unaccompanied children from those countries. The children arriving from Central American countries fall under this provision and cannot and simply cannot be turned away.
Those who oppose undocumented immigrants say they are a burden on the community. In the city of Murrieta, busloads of immigrants were stopped by protesters.
This is not a time for us to stand in judgment. It is a time for compassion and we must help.
Of the 57,000 minors entering the U.S., 30,000 have been placed with relatives or sponsors while they await immigration hearings.
I think it's time for us to think about how we will make sure that these children are treated upon arrival as we move into reunification and legal proceedings.
They're children. We need to be there for them. We need to be able to offer them social services. We need to be able to give them mental health services.
According to reports, the Obama administration is seeking a $3.7 billion package to deal with what the President is calling a humanitarian crisis. I'm Rosha Goel for L.A. this week.
The children's arrival has sparked debates in many states over how to pay for shelter, food, and education for the children. It's about community solidarity and crime prevention, and there was plenty of that to go around as the Southland celebrated National Night Out. Yana K. reports.
Business owner Lindsay Hollister is welcoming customers at a booth she set up right in front of her pie store in downtown L.A.'s Arts District. She's just one of many vendors who are taking a united stand against crime in her beloved neighborhood by participating in National Night Out.
We're still downtown, you know. We're a big city, so definitely things happen, and we have definitely felt the presence of the LAPD helping us out when we've had issues. And just being here in the neighborhood and bringing awareness to the safety of it.
This is the 31st National Night Out Crime Prevention Event, and it offers an opportunity for police officers and community members to get together and network, exchange ideas, and build stronger relationships with each other.
This is where we get to talk, usually under non-stressful situations, where they get to know us. The community wants to know their police. They want to know their officers, and this is how we get to do it.
A number of Southland cities are taking part in National Night Out, including many from the West Side and the Valley. Past events have included cookouts and block parties, and here in Sherman Oaks, there was certainly no shortage of neighborhood spirit or food trucks as residents came out in droves to mingle and take a stand against crime.
We've had historic lows in crime, not just because of great policing, but because we have the community that is a part of that partnership of looking out for their neighbors.
Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti was joined by Los Angeles Police Chief Charlie Beck. They say communities can become even safer when residents know and trust their local police officers.
Building communities is extremely important to keep a neighborhood safe.
And by the looks of it, this neighborhood is one tight-knit community. Resident and mother of two Erin Amos says events like these help her feel safe.
I think it's great because we get to go get out and meet the officers that are protecting us specifically in the neighborhood, and it's get to meet our neighbors and have fun.
All the neighborhoods around here are all connected. We all communicate with one another.
And when communities look out for each other and have fun together, it's a win-win for all. I'm Yana K. for L.A. this week.
Started in 1984, National Night Out is traditionally held during the first week of August. And the issue of crime and violence is also a big concern shared across the nation by schools and universities in every community. A recent gathering brought the realities of campus violence front and center as educators and law enforcement officials try to find solutions.
SC, over 20,000 undergraduates, almost as many staff, some Saturdays, well over 100,000 people at events.
At the first-ever Campus Safety Conference hosted by Campus Safety Magazine, LAPD Chief Charlie Beck was invited to speak to school administrators, school security personnel, and other concerned individuals. While crime is at historic lows across the country, Chief Beck says there's the other side to the pendulum.
The sheer volume of active shooter incidents on our campuses, the tremendous disparity that we face between the very poor and the very rich that drive some crime that affects our campuses.
In 2012, two USC graduate students from China were gunned down outside one of the victims' apartments just blocks away from campus. Two men were arrested for the murders. And just last month, another USC graduate student from China, 24-year-old Xing Ranji, was beaten to death with a baseball bat as he walked home from a study group. Four teenagers ranging from 16 to 19 have been arrested.
Events are happening around the country on a daily, weekly basis, whether it be a sexual event or an active shooter. There are more and more universities in K through 12. Educators are looking for ways to help get the message out to protect their people as best they can.
Vendors also attended the conference, providing information on security tools ranging from high-tech surveillance systems to mace and pepper spray to keypad security door locks. Another tool money can't buy, LAPD Chief Charlie Beck says at the end of the day, cooperation between the school, the local community, and local law enforcement is critical in keeping our schools safe. In the case of the 2012 murders of the two USC grad students, two suspects were arrested. One of them pleaded guilty and is now serving two consecutive life sentences. Legends of professional skateboarding helped the city open its newest skate park. Gil Reyes reports on the impact it's having in the community of Boyle Heights.
These skateboarders practiced their drop-ins without police dropping by to spoil the fun.
We went to street spots where they kick us out, send the cops after us, and now we have a perfect place to practice.
Hundreds turned out for the opening of Boyle Heights' newest skate plaza in Hazard Park, a 10,000-square-foot thrashers' paradise with stairs, rails, and ramps. The cost, $320,000, money was raised with the help of pro-skateboarding icon Rob Deereck.
I think something like this, that's a great alternative athletic for kids, maybe misunderstood because it's a newer sport, but I think when they see how much use it gets and how many kids enjoy it, I think anyone that was opposed to it would change their mind at this point.
Compared to other outdoor activities like cycling, for example, skateboarding has received little love from the general public. It's banned in most public spaces, so skateboarders oftentimes have to practice at night, in parking garages, busy streets, and other areas where safety is compromised. Councilman Jose Wezar wants to change that. He's now opened two skate parks in Boyle Heights, home to a large skateboarding community.
At the end of the day, it gives them the exercise they need. It gives them the place to be and safe. And after we opened the first skate park at Holmback, I had a lot of constituents tell me that, you know, they see a lot more kids at that skate park, and they like it because there's less of them on their driveways.
Skaters say the sport offers an alternative to games. Parents say they're happy their kids are practicing here instead of on the street. Another rad playground to land your tricks. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The California Endowment and Diamond Supply Company helped secure funds to make the skate park possible. Filing a damage claim from the LEDWP trunk line rupture in Westwood, the mayor prepares to review the performance of every single city department head, and the mayor talks salary hikes for LAPD officers. These stories and more in City Beat. Los Angeles police officers, dressed in white Union T-shirts, recently showed up in force at City Hall demanding salary raises. And a week later, the mayor chaired a closed-session meeting of the Executive Employee Relations Committee regarding collective bargaining instructions for the Los Angeles Police Protective League. He had this to say at the conclusion of the meeting.
Making sure that we can recruit officers at the right salaries and retain officers who during the recession came in at a lower level remains a priority, and that's something that we need to do together with the union.
The mayor says the city is also preparing to work with the United Firefighters of Los Angeles City regarding pay hikes for the city's firefighters. If your vehicle or other property was damaged during the Westwood Sense at Boulevard trunk line rupture, you're able to file a claim by going to ledwp.com/claims and downloading a form. Claims can be sent via email at ccenter@ledwp.com or by email to the L.A. Department of Water and Power, Attention, Claim Section, PO Box 51111, Room 342, Los Angeles, California, You are asked to write UCLA claim on the envelope or in the subject line of your email. When Mayor Eric Garcetti first took office, he actually required every city department head to reapply for his or her job. Throughout the past year, the mayor and his staff have worked with the general managers and their departments to set goals and to establish metrics for measuring and reporting departmental performance. And now the mayor's office has announced that the mayor has begun his second annual review of every city department head in order to hold them accountable for their performance. Since taking office in 2013, the mayor has appointed 10 new general managers, including Chief Ralph Tarazas to the Los Angeles Fire Department and Marcy Edwards to the Department of Water and Power. You're looking at a composite sketch of a man police a sexually assaulted woman walking inside Depp's Park in the 4200 block of Monterey Road. The first incident was reported in January of this year when a woman walking in the park was groped by a Hispanic man on a bicycle. Then on June 25th, a woman told police a Hispanic man on a green bicycle exposed himself to her. The latest incident was reported on July 20th. This time, the suspect reportedly was armed with a knife and grabbed the female victim by the shoulder and struck her. The suspect is said to have short, dark hair, to be around 20 to 25 years old, and five foot seven to five foot eight, around 140 to 160 pounds. Volunteers helped mark Councilman Gil Sadio's first year in office by spotlighting his Keep It Clean campaign. Anna Marcos takes a look.
This is what a community cleaning up its act looks like. Residents and Councilmember Gil Sadio's District 1 are celebrating the one-year anniversary of the Keep It Clean campaign.
We've been successful in partnering with the Bureau of Sanitation in cleaning up 289 alleys. We've been able to pick up tons of trash.
Curbside bulky item pickup? Forget about it. City leaders in District 1 have launched a pilot program that picks up bulky items from inside your own house.
Bureau of Sanitation will come to your house and pick up your bulky item, whether that piece of furniture, whatever it may be, they will take it out of your house. You no longer have to place it on the sidewalk for pickup. This is the newest change in bulk item pickups. We think that this will keep the streets a little cleaner.
And so the volunteers come in all shapes and sizes: tiny debris sweepers, big weed shovellers, enterprising rakers, and everything in between, all ready to make their community a cleaner, safer place to live.
Cleaning up the community and being something positive can be done and can continue to be done. Lead by example.
But a few dozen volunteers can't do it alone.
Since we've spent a year and over a million dollars in cleaning this community, we want to make sure that the message is out that we need to keep it clean.
With a little luck, maybe more in the community will pitch in. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The in-house bulky item pickup pilot program could spread to other districts. The L.A. Dodgers, by the way, also helped in the cleanup. It's got miles of jogging and horseback trails, picnic areas, and plenty of outdoor recreation. But now visitors to Griffith Park can also get their hearts pumping by using the park's outdoor gym. Yana K. reports.
Located by the Crystal Springs picnic area in Griffith Park, visitors will now be able to work up a sweat thanks to this brand-new exercise equipment.
This is a great opportunity for people who want to come and do a little bit of exercise. It's a nice, safe way to try out some new exercises. So I think it's a great addition to the park.
Three, two, one.
City officials and community members held a ribbon cutting to introduce the new fitness zone, which features 13 stations of workout equipment and is conveniently situated near baseball diamond, golf course, and popular walking trail. Councilmember Tom LaBange gave a shout-out to fellow Councilman Mike Bonin, who represents the West Side.
See that, Mike Bonin? You've got muscle beats, but we got it here, too.
The fitness zone is part of the Department of Recreation and Parks' goal to bring health and fitness to communities in Los Angeles.
Physical activity is so important, and in this day and age, we need to really concentrate on that, so I'm very happy to see this come to life.
The Department of Recreation and Parks says fitness zones have proven very popular among residents because they're easy to use and accessible. I'm Yana K. for L.A. this week.
In this week's list of things to do, a celebration at El Pueblo, Marilyn the exhibit, and a renowned photographer may be taking your picture. The El Pueblo Historical Monument, better known as Home to Olvera Street, is celebrating 130 years of the Plaza Firehouse on Saturday, August 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, located at 125 Paseo de la Plaza. El Pueblo will be celebrating this historic milestone by showcasing antique fire rigs and apparatuses on the plaza and rarely seen photos and artifacts. There will also be living history performances courtesy of the LA FD Historical Society in the Pico House at 11:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. Go to Facebook slash L.A. this week where we posted information on the event. If you are a Marilyn Monroe fan, you likely already know about this exhibit at the Hollywood Museum, located at 1660 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood. Commemorating the 52nd anniversary of Marilyn Monroe's passing, Marilyn the exhibit returns to the Hollywood Museum showcasing an intimate look at the actress's life and legacy. The exhibit showcases Marilyn's gorgeous gowns and personal wardrobe, including the one and only million-dollar dress she wore on her USO tour while entertaining 10,000 troops in Korea. The exhibition also features photographs and documents from her private files. The ongoing exhibit will be on display through the end of the month. For dates, times, and ticket prices, go to thehollywoodmuseum.com. Gary Leonard is an L.A. treasure. He's photographed the city's milestones, people, and happenings since the 1970s. And on Saturday, August 16th, he'll take a photo of you. That is, if you show up at the L.A. Central Library's free event hosted by Photo Friends of the Los Angeles Public Library. L.A. observes Kevin Roderick will talk with Leonard about his amazing career and show some highlights of his Take My Picture photos. Mr. Leonard will then take a group photo of the audience after the presentation, which will take place from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. The Central Library is located at 630 West Fifth Street downtown. Go to lapl.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It could well be the dance event of the year for many residents of Watts. We're talking about the Watts Senior Prom. Anna Marcos shows us how it made some senior citizens feel special.
This is like no high school prom ever. For one thing, the prom-goers have been out of high school a while, and for many, it provides a trip down memory lane.
Oh, yeah, a long way back, a long way back. See, I'm an OG from Watts. I'm an OG from Watts. I've been here six or seven years, and that takes me back to where I come from.
And who is the dashing young man now entering the dance hall? That is Councilmember Joe Buscaino. His office teamed up with the Watts Neighborhood Council and the Department of Recreation and Parks to put on the Watts Senior Prom, the first such event ever. There is an age limit. You have to be at least 62 to get in, unless, of course, you're a council member.
It's gives an opportunity again for us to praise our seniors, love them, and thank them, and let them know that they're not alone.
There were extra goodies like awards for the youngest and oldest senior citizen.
Thank you.
Buscaino was going to bring his 92-year-old grandmother. Instead, he gave her the victory award for surviving a fall which made her unable to attend, so his mother accepted in her place. And just like in high school, you can't have a prom without a king and queen. No chaperones needed here. All in all, a day to remember for years to come. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
City leaders say they may hold the Watts Senior Prom as an annual event. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
911 emergency, operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti. I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies. 911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard. If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond. Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Parents, distinguished faculty, mom, dad. Today's lesson, how to exercise with your kids and save the planet. First, you must believe, be that your children really are the future. Second, you must do. Instead of jumping in the car, let's go for a walk, or a run, or even a bike ride. No pollution, no oil, no gas, and as long as you obey all safety rules, we're cool. Lastly, you have to live. Live into our big, beautiful, healthy future. Be, do, live. Watch the road.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Buscan, Osorio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corret, LaBange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, ten members present, according to Mr. President.
This, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. O'Farrell moves, Mr. Corret seconds.
Next is committal resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonn and moves, Mr. Englander seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, now be the time for the flag salute.
I'd like all to rise and ask Mr. O'Farrell to lead us in the pledge allegiance to the United States of America and all our guests, please rise and face the flag, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Members, if you could please direct your attention to the agenda and on that agenda, Madam Clerk, let's run through.
First, Mr. President, there's requests to continue items one, F, I, and J to August 26th, and item two to October 15th.
Without objection.
Item one is an item known for public hearing.
Item one is a notice for public hearing, no cards on that matter. Do we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate to vote.
Ten eyes.
Madam, next item.
Items three through 20 are items which public hearings have been held.
Any specials on three through 20, Mr. Bonn and? Seven and eight, the commissioners, thank you of our fine airport, thank you. Any other madams, three through, items, three through 20. Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate to vote.
Eleven eyes.
Eleven eyes.
And Mr. President, item nine, which is an ordinance, will be held over for one week if not reconsidered with 12 members.
Good, we'll have that, Mr. Corcoran has just joined us, thank you, Mr. Corcoran, as always. Next item.
Items 21 through 32 are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes required for consideration.
Let's open the roll on consideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Eleven eyes, so those matters are before us, are there any cards on those?
No cards.
No cards, any specials, member? Specials? Open the, excuse me, let's hold 29 for Mr. Sadio, the first district, on the balance, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Eleven eyes, next item.
On the supplemental agenda, item 33 is an item which a public hearing has not been held, 10 votes required for consideration.
Let's open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Eleven eyes, very good, that's for consideration. Let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine eyes, two noes.
Two noes, okay, thank you. And they, thank you so much.
Mr. President, there's requests, this is an item 33 forthwith.
Thirty, so ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Good, and we have Mr. Fuentes here right now, which is very good, before we call Mr. Corcoran, you're not ready yet, or Mr. Weezer not ready yet, on the 12 vote items, let's open the roll on the 12 vote items.
And that's item nine.
Item nine.
This is a reconsideration, Mr. President.
Reconsideration first, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes, so ordered, send that forthwith.
Now the item is before you, Mr. President.
Okay. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes. Now forthwith. Thank you, Madam Clerk, next item.
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Let's call, let's get our commissioners, Mr. Bonn and, you ready right now, Mr. Bonn and, who's the great councilman of the 11th district, which is the home of the Los Angeles International Airport, Madam Clerk, please call this matter before us.
Seven and eight.
Item seven is the appointment of Mr. Gabriel Eschequian, and item eight is the appointment of Matthew Johnson, both the Board of Airport Commissioners.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I forgot my glasses this morning, so I can barely tell you apart right now. Colleagues, a year ago, Mayor Garcetti appointed almost an entirely new Board of Airport Commissioners, with the exception of the Vice Chair Valerie Velasco from the 11th District, he did so, he appointed a group that was smart and energetic and was committed to the commitment that the mayor and I have to make sure we have a world-class airport that is a first-class neighbor, we have the reappointment before us today of Matt Johnson and Gabriel Eschequian. Gentlemen, you have served for a year, if you could tell us a little bit about where you, where you see the airport has been successful in the past year and where you see it going, and you can use this as an opportunity to talk about the good things that are happening with LAX modernization, so people know about them.
Sure, thank you and good morning. It has been a year and it's been an absolute honor and privilege to serve on the, on the Airport Commission. The airport is a, is a vital component to the growth of the city, it's the, it's, in many instances, it's the first impression that people have of our city when they visit. It has been a very interesting experience, the issues are complex, there, there are many issues that we're dealing with that are very, have high dollar amounts associated with them, have community impact associated with them, future economic growth associated with them, so this is a, a very sort of critical job for the city. It has been, it has been great to work with the airport staff, I think we have a first-rate airport staff led by Gina Marie Lindsay, I have been very impressed with all of the senior leadership that I've worked with, which has basically been in all of the areas. We came into, I would say, probably the third inning of the modernization of our, of our airport, we've made, there was some great progress made before we got there, we, we arrived with the opening of the, the Tom Bradley Terminal, which I think has been a huge success. We're trying to continue that success with the modernization of the other terminals, and we are well underway to getting those done, we have important projects ahead of us, everything from the midfield satellite concourse, to an automated people mover, to the Conrac, to the intermodal transportation facility, and then we also have ongoing issues, making sure that the employees at the, at the airport, all the labor people are treated fairly and with respect, and, you know, probably our primary responsibility is making sure our airport is as safe and secure as possible, we had a tragic incident in the, in, during the course of our first year, and that gave us an opportunity to really take, take a look at everything that the airport was doing, past practices, the blue ribbon panel that had, had been previously convened, look at their recommendations, and take another look at those recommendations, and essentially really take a second look about how we could make sure that we were doing everything we could within reason to make sure our airport is as safe and secure as possible.
Thank you.
So these are all, all issues that we've been dealing with on an ongoing basis in the last year.
He hit all the high notes.
That's right, Commissioner Johnson left very little for me to add, I echo all of his sentiments, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the City of Los Angeles, our great mayor Eric Garcetti, the City Council, I have had the privilege of working with, not just with Commissioner Johnson, but collaborating and learning from my, from my colleagues on the Board of Airport Commissioners, when I first was appointed, there were, there were tremendous challenges that came before us, some of which I had known about, some of which I had, I didn't know anything about, and what I didn't realize was the vast, the vastness of Los Angeles World Airport, especially LAX, it's the size of a city, it has the budget of potentially some cities, and getting to know the staff has been a real privilege for me, because not only do they have a vision for what the airport needs to look like and needs to be, but they have the tenacity, they have the strength, and I, I will tell you that they work exceptionally hard to make sure that the vision that we all have for that airport is being implemented. Just echoing Commissioner Johnson, we have the Tom Bradley International Terminal, which is almost fully operational, we still have some, some gates that are being worked on, also a new security area in the entry hall, that is just the first step for the modernization of all of our terminals, so at this stage, as a board, we've approved upgrades, substantial upgrades, that will mimic and mirror the beauty and the, the capacity of Tom Bradley in Terminal One, Terminal Two, Six, Seven, and Eight, and hopefully those will be done in the next couple of years. One of the critical components of the success of the airport also is making sure that we have the optimal amount of gates to serve the natural demand for how the airport is growing, and that will be done with the midfield satellite concourse, we have 11 gates that are scheduled to be built, it could go up to 29 depending on what the capacity is and what the demand is, and also what, what the needs are for the community and for the neighborhood. That being said, the transportation system is, is looking great, we have approval for Metro now to build the people mover that connects to a, to a subway stop, consolidated car rental facility, and an intermodal transportation facility that will certainly make what was built in 1958 for, I believe, a maximum of 3 million passengers, give us the capacity to accommodate the 70 million plus passengers that we have on the horizon, so I wanted to just say that I'm very excited to be part of this wonderful commission, and we really look forward to, to what things are going to be like in the next three to five years.
Colleagues, both of these commissioners have been serving with incredible distinction for the past year, working for free, as almost all of our commissioners do, and working probably significantly more hours than you expected when you signed up, so glad you're willing to sign up for a second term, ask for an eye vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bonn and, on that, there's no speakers on the queue, I thank you as committee chair, and let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
All right, so ordered, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're circulating the substitute for 29, and the, Madam Clerk has informed me that we could call that, has it been circulated? All right, so on 29, let's open the roll on 20.
Excuse me, Mr. President, for this matter first, council should vote on whether to substitute?
Yes, thank you very much, let's open the roll on substitution. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thirteen eyes, so ordered.
Now council should vote on the item, Mr.
Let's vote on the order of the item. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
So ordered, forthwith. Mr. Weezer, could I call any, we have some very distinguished guests, of which all our guests are distinguished, with this for the Nisei Week Ceremony, and the great work, the mayor of Nagoya was here.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm quite excited today to stand here to recognize the 74th Annual Nisei Week Court, and this past Saturday was the coronation, and this past Sunday was the Nisei Week Parade, and let's give a big round of applause to the 74th Nisei Week Queen and her court, congratulations. You know, the Japanese-American community has played an important role in the development of this wonderful city for more than a century, Little Tokyo was founded in the 1880s when the first Japanese-owned business was established near First Street and Central Avenue, within a few years, a community of nearly 30,000 had located to the area with a thriving business district, just a generation later, in the 1930s, Little Tokyo community leaders created Nisei Week to raise awareness of Japanese culture and the unique district of Little Tokyo, and since 1934, Angelenos have gathered every August to celebrate Japanese customs and traditions, and the positive impact that the Japanese community has had in shaping our city. Nisei Week has grown into one of the largest celebrations of Japanese culture in the United States, with an array of events, exhibitions, festivals, and a grand parade, and I have to say, I was very fortunate to grow up so close to Little Tokyo, because it had such a positive impact on me, having worked there each and every day after high school at a local video store, having delivered the Ra Fu Chimpu, and those of us that are old enough to remember the Kashu Manichi, and as you can imagine, that experience had a profound impact on me and many other young people who continue to explore Japanese-American culture here in the City of Los Angeles, I could not be more proud and honored to represent the Little Tokyo community on this little, on this City Council, it is truly one of the gems of our city, and in downtown, when other areas were not doing so well before this recent resurgence that we've seen, you could always count on Little Tokyo as a place to visit and experience in a very unique environment, as I've said before, Little Tokyo's history is not only part of Japanese-American history, it is a part of Los Angeles history, and is very much rooted in America's history, and Nisei Week is an important part of that history and tradition, the Nisei Week Foundation did a wonderful job with this year's festivities, I'd like to thank Mike Okamoto, thank you, Mike, where are you, Mike, thank you so much. He is the Nisei Week Foundation President, and I want to thank him for all the hard work he has done, and now it is my pleasure to introduce this year's Nisei Week Queen and her royal court, this year's Nisei Week Queen, Tori Angela Nishinaka Leon, will be representing the Nisei Week Foundation for the year to come, I want to congratulate Tori and the entire court, and Tori, would you like to say a few words, please?
Tori, please welcome Tori.
Hi, good morning, everyone, my name is Tori Nishinaka Leon, I'm the 2014 Nisei Week Queen, I'd like to introduce to you the rest of the court, we have first Princess Lindsay Sugimoto, our Miss Tomodachi, Ashley Arakawa, Princess Tiffany Hashimoto, Princess Dominique Mashburn, and Princess Melissa Kozono. We would just like to thank you for your support and the representation of Jose Wezard, we'd like to also invite you to our closing ceremony on Sunday to Guduz Street Dancing in Little Tokyo, it's going to be a great time, and we'd love to see you there, we have also for you 2014 Nisei Week Booklets for all of you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tori, and congratulations again, and again, Nisei Week is still going on and will conclude this Sunday, you can go to nisewek.org for more information on all the fun and events, and at this time, I'd like to present to our Queen a resolution from the City of Los Angeles congratulating the Queen and her court, and Mike for a wonderful Nisei Week 2014, congratulations.
Mr. Weezer, thank you so much on that, and it was a great parade last Sunday, and all the people who enjoyed it, and they're going to get this picture, I do want to salute James Okazaki, retired Assistant General Manager, DOT, never giving up and helping the community, James, good job, and where's Norman Arakawa's daughter, right there, for the Port of Los, Ms. Friendship, good job, Ms. Friendship, you have a great father, the Port of LA, all the work, Nagoya, Los Angeles, great efforts, and it still continues, thank you, Mr. Weezer, great leadership, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaBange.
On item number 22, I have been a report from the legislative staff here, to reconsider item 22. To hold for many motions, so let's open the roll on reconsideration of 22. Close the roll on reconsideration. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
So just hold it on the desk, now, Mr. Corcoran, for a very, very special presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and members, just imagine that you are a parent of a four-year-old child, and you're given the news that that child has been diagnosed with leukemia, and imagine being in that position and knowing that a simple bone marrow transplant might be what saves your child's life, but how in the world do you go about finding a donor that can make a match? Now imagine further that you're a member of a group that has unique genetic makeup, and it's a small group in the world, and that your likelihood of finding that match is that much lower because you're a member of that ethnic group, well, that was the situation facing, the situ, facing the parents of Aliq Topalian 15 years ago, when she was diagnosed with leukemia, and because of that experience, she became the inspiration for a movement that became a global movement, and that movement became the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry and its charitable trust, as a result of the leadership shown by Aliq's parents and reaching out to Dr. Frida Jordan, who was then head of laboratory services at the Anthony Nolan Institute, which was one of the world's leading bone marrow registries, a, a new charity was formed that has done remarkable, remarkable good for people around the world for the last 15 years. Dr. Jordan approached Dr. Sevak Avagyan, and together they spearheaded, spearheaded the creation of the registry, which has had volunteers from all over the world, as I mentioned, they created an independent, non-governmental, nonprofit organization, which has facilitated people who are unrelated but for the fact that they have this linkage of genetic compatibility, which allows them to donate marrow and become lifesavers. In 2003, the registry facilitated its first transplant, and in 2005, the registry opened its Mariana Kazarian Center right here in Los Angeles, and in 2008, its state-of-the-art stem cell harvesting center in Yerevan, Armenia, which plays a vital role in stem cell transplants and the treatment of diseases such as cancer, diabetes, and heart disease, to date, the registry has made tremendous strides over the last 15 years, and it has now more than 20,000 donors in the registry from 13 countries, the registry has identified 1,700 patients and 1,400 potential matches, and has facilitated 12 lifesaving bone marrow transplants, so it is a great, great honor and pleasure for me to join with all of you in marking the 15th anniversary of the creation of the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry, and I, it's my great privilege to introduce to you the President of the Board of Directors and the inspirational leader of the registry throughout all these years, Dr. Frida Jordan, Dr. Jordan?
Thank you, I'm Dr. Jordan, the President of Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry, thank you, thank you, Paul Corcoran, for arranging this for us, and this, especially in this year, this is our 15th anniversary celebration year. And especially in this year, this is our 15th anniversary celebration year. Cancer affects all of us at some point in our life. You may personally have struggled with the disease, or most certainly, everyone in this room has known a loved one who has. The Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry focuses on blood-related cancer such as leukemia, which of course impacts communities and ethnicities throughout the planet. 15 years ago, only a handful of people knew about the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry and its lifesaving mission. Now we have over 26,000 potential donors and facilitated many transplants. Apart from donor recruitment and community outreach, our work is also carried out through our own stem cell harvesting center, the only one in this kind in the Caucasian region. This center has earned membership in and accolades from many of the world's top medical organizations. Here in Los Angeles, we have the privilege and responsibility of serving potentially hundreds of thousands of people. The Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry ensures that a patient with life-threatening blood disease, now or in the future, will have a much better chance of survival. But these benefits don't stop there. The Bone Marrow Registry also presents the citizens of this great city with the opportunity to actually save a life by registering as potential donors or lending their support as volunteers and contributors. Today, as we celebrate our 15th anniversary, we salute the dedicated members of Los Angeles City Council, and thank you all for your gracious recognition of our mission. With your help, we can save more life in Los Angeles and beyond, in communities throughout the world. If anybody wants, is interested to become a donor to our registry, they can go to our website, which is www.abmdr.am. And I'm very honored that today we are joined with our honorary chairperson, Dr. Bella Kocarian, our executive director, Dr. Sevak Avagyan, and most precious people in this gathering is also our patient, Aliq Topalian, and our donor, Arpene Zorabian. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much, Dr. Jordan, and it's a great privilege to be joined by the former First Lady of the Republic of Armenia, Dr. Bella Kocarian, who has been the honorary chairperson and driving force, as well as Dr. Avagyan, who is, again, part of the beginning of this and has been a great leader since the beginning. But most of all, I told you about a young child who, at four years old, received the bad news of a diagnosis, and that was little Aliq Topalian. Well, I'm very pleased to be able to introduce to you now, 15 years later, Aliq Topalian, who is going to share her experience with all of us. Aliq?
Good morning, everyone. I'm both honored and humbled to be speaking in front of you, the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Aliq Topalian, and I'm a childhood cancer survivor. Not only am I a cancer survivor, but I'm an Armenian-American. What does this mean to me? To me, it means being a part of something much more than myself and my heritage. It means being a part of a group of people who can overcome all different forms of adversity. Armenians overcome. We are a small population, but we are very strong. We have had enough bloodshed, and we do not need to lose more of our population to disease such as cancer. This is what brought this organization together. So many Armenians together to fight for one cause, a little girl who was sick. And now this cause has expanded to help other world, others worldwide. I was that sick little girl. I was diagnosed when I was four years old with acute myeloid leukemia. I was given a 13% chance of survival if I was able to find a bone marrow transplant. And doctors said my best chance of a match would be from within the Armenian community. My family organized drives across the world looking for donors, but there was no success. I lost my right eye in the process, and now wear prosthetic. Thankfully, that is the only thing that I lost. I was able to go under remission with the use of experimental chemotherapy. I am now 20 years old and will be graduating college this year with a degree in psychology, and hope to pursue my PhD starting next fall. Although I did not find a match, this is all possible because of people like you, the city council, people who donate, who give life, and who care about the well-being of it with others. I have, as I am sure you have, lost people to this disease, both family and friends, people whom I love and people whom I will never get back. This is why we fight, so no one has to go through this form of pain. Be a donor, save a life. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and you know, you know, it's so easy to register as a, as a marrow donor, and it meets, it makes such a big difference to people. Somebody that you don't even know, somebody that you may never meet, their life might be changed, their life might be saved because of that simple act of registering as a bone marrow donor. And, and so I'm, I'm pleased to be able also to honor one of the bone marrow donors from the registry, Arpene Zorabian. Arpene?
Hello, thank you very much. Seven years ago, I registered to become a bone marrow donor in hopes to save a life. About four years ago, three to four years ago, I received a call that changed my life forever. On March 4th, 2011, I was notified that I was a potential match for a three-year-old girl who had leukemia and had been only given three to six months to live. After doing further testing on April 4th, 2011, I was told that I was a 100% match for this little girl. On May 4th, 2011, I donated a part of my bone marrow to this little girl. She was given a second chance to live again, to laugh and to play again. And today, she is six years old, cancer-free, and happy, as should every child be. It's organizations like the Armenian Bone Marrow Registry that make this possible and give children and adults a second chance to live again. I urge everybody to become a donor and give another child or another human being a second chance to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Arpene. And so, members, on behalf of the entire city council of the City of Los Angeles, it's my great privilege to be able to present this resolution commemorating the 15 years of extraordinary global service, lifesaving service, performed by the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry Charitable Trust. Thank you very much, members. Let's give them another round of applause. There's, there's angels in the city of angels. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Kokorian. Okay, and where does that take us? Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, can we do a quick introduction? Quick introduction? Introduction?
Oh, yes, Mr. Busciano.
If I may. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it gives me great pleasure to welcome to the John Farrell Chambers, Operation Progress. Boys and girls, please stand up. If we have Channel 35, recognize them. Operation Progress is an amazing, amazing youth program initiated by LAPD Southeast Officers, and serving on their board is our own Board of Public Works Commission President, Kevin James, along with Steve Robinson, Janet Crown. These are boys and girls from St. Lawrence, Brindisi, Vermonday High School, St. Mary's Academy. An incredible partnership through the Caruso Family Foundation. Myself, along with Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas, also serve as advisory board members. Teresa, if you can, raise your hand, the Director. Amazing work that they're continuing to do in Watts through collaboration with the schools, with the police department, and other community-based organizations. They're here visiting us. Kevin James has taken them and visiting, many of them here for the, actually, all of them for the first time here at City Hall. Commissioner James, thanks for your leadership in Operation Progress, and you're doing amazing work. You're saving lives, Teresa. John Jones III, my Wattsville deputy is here. Boys and girls, just to let you know, we love you. We want the best for you, specifically those, you know, you live in Watts. We want you to help us put a shine on Watts, and we're so proud of all the work that you're doing and the grades that you're putting forth in, in your schools. So thank you, God bless you, we love you. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Great. No, thank you very much. Let's give them all a round of applause. Thank you. Okay, so we're waiting for amending motions on a particular item, so we'll go ahead and take general public comment. Mr. Labanche?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the city council. I'm honored to recognize the Islamic Republic Iran Men's National Volleyball Team. Stand up, everybody. Please move out of the way. Mr. President, members, this is a special team traveling. Our State Department working out to reach, you'll like this, Mr. Labanche, to reach all phases, using the efforts of athletics, art, and music to make ties, better, strong ties. As you know, we have a sister-city relationship with Tehran, and this is the first time we've had a long visit, which we certainly welcome you here. They're great volleyball players, tall volleyball players, and they've come and played at our universities. We want to salute them on this very special trip. With me is Mr. Klosterman, who is the United States Volleyball Chairman. And Mr. Klosterman, come up here and say a few words and tell us about this special trip.
Thank you very much. Yes, Kerry Klosterman, Secretary General, U.S. Volleyball. I, first of all, would like to recognize and welcome and honor our esteemed delegation from Iran. It's been 35 years since we've had a sports exchange in volleyball with Iran. We're holding four matches here in Southern California, and would like to recognize the city council and the City of Los Angeles for your support in this endeavor, and present a small token to the city council.
Mitch, ready?
And I'm sure one of our teams will win the gold in Rio in 2016.
Well, thank you very much. It's so nice to see the athletes here and their support. We have a representative of the State Department here. Mr. President, good to see you and welcome, which is so nice to have you here. And we thank Mrs. Rani from the Hollywood area for organizing this, which is so special. So with that, I have a proclamation, first and foremost, to the Men's National Volleyball Team of the Islamic Republic of Iran. Welcome to Los Angeles. And in Colorado Springs, where your headquarters is, the U.S. Men's National Volleyball, you know how much is the sports? Right now, it's the end of the 16 Days of Glory, when we had our great Olympic Games in Los Angeles in 1984, 30 years ago. Today, it's so special here. So, Mr. President, and Madam Clerk, our city attorney, all the staff, we certainly welcome our, our friends here. And sport, music, and art brings the world together. Okay, peace. Thank you.
Was he back there?
We'll go in the back room right here. Thank you, sir. Good job. Here we go.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and go into general public comment while another item is being circulated. Brian Barajas?
All right. I'm going to give a sense of the power of fusion again, but this time in a context of replenishing the Colorado River. Now, NASA has determined, what, we only have 12 to 18 months of water? But the context is this: Russia and China will develop helium from the moon.
You've got to stick to items under our purview for general public comment.
Yeah, I know, but let's just stick to the principle of not killing the population. That's what you were put in office to do. Now, consider this: You have universities, don't you? Get the best minds who can tell you what fusion energy is. It's the following: You replenish this...
Again, it's got to be, got to be items that are directly under the purview of the City of Los Angeles for general public comment.
Well, put this on your item. If you want to develop your economy, that's the issue. Otherwise, you're going to kill people. And I don't think that you want to kill people. Good. Now, let me put it into context. Thirty, let's just say, millions of tons of coal in comparison to 532 pounds of helium. Fusion powering desalinization. Think about it. Why the hell do we go to fusion? It's because it's the next step to mankind's development. That's human. That's the power of humanity. We go to fusion. Kennedy was murdered because of this crap. How dare he push fusion? So oligarchy pushed what? The green movement, the bullshit windmills and the bullshit solar panels.
Donna Perman?
Name's Perman, by the way. Anyway, my heart goes to the family and friends of Robin Williams, the comedic genius, may be raised to peace. Anyway, I wanted to tell you, every other month in Van Nuys is not enough. And if you happen to miss it, it's four months. It's not right. You don't care about the Valley, especially the people over here in the, the Valley other than Alercon, and of course, Nuri, who cares about the Valley? But the rest of you don't care about the Valley, so otherwise you would reopen Van Nuys video conferencing. Anyway, you ask for fairness for hotel workers to make $15 an hour. Certainly, there should be fairness for city employees. No more should be asked for city employees for their health care or pension. They already sacrificed. Certainly, with the city council being the highest paid, with the great benefits, and cars at their disposals, they should be the ones to ask to sacrifice. Also, along with our mayor, city controller, city attorney, commissioners, and DWP that make much more than other city employees, they should be asked to sacrifice. And I want to tell people to prepare, to protect yourselves, so in case ISIS comes to the United States. They are ruthless. People in Iraq are being slaughtered, not in the name of God, but greed and power. We should be able to arm ourselves, have gun safety classes to use wisely, and not have these horrible gun control laws that only go after the criminals. Guns do save lives. You have to know how and when to use it, and to practice it so you can hit it, hit the target if needed. Be prepared in every way that's necessary in case they come, with food, water, anyway. Get, I don't like the, I don't...
Okay, thank you very much. Jose Martinez?
Good morning. My name is Jose Martinez, and the reason of my presence before you is well-known by all of you. Okay? I want to ask the city attorney, I submitted complaint two times to the chamber, and the two times have been denied because in one year, the government did not take action. Then how come, after that date, I have a deposition date? Please make me understand that. You are nothing but a bunch of abusers that enjoy with the suffering and the struggle of the people. Thank you very much.
Henry Moreno? Followed by Wayne, followed by Herman.
Yes, the members of this council have one more year of sitting at the service and latest contribution credit. Your pay and benefits equal that of a superior court judge in LA. Therefore... Therefore, you are expected to provide city craftsmen pay only, or pay and lasers benefits equal to the prevailing wage sum due in L.A. We call that equality. However, Hackman College paychecks, W-2s, and MOU-2s show every percent publicly sheltered and diverted from public employee pension and benefit plans for the past 22 years. So what's wrong with this picture? We got a money laundering machine, it only goes one way. We got no permanent public employees. We got no contributors or lasers. And so-called people, you know? No union member can self-contribute to union contractor responsible benefit plans, except to plans under Cobra provisions. Public entities cannot contribute public funds to private sector plans for the benefit of public employees. There is no discount on the prevailing cost of labor and benefits in L.A. George Meany made it clear that the pay of public employees cannot be unionized. Yet, union politicians keep wasting, as private sector union politicians, keep wasting our money pretending George Meany was wrong. Just follow the numbers. It's all going one way. We got a backflow problem here.
The other, I called the others. If you're not going to come up and stand behind the second set of ropes to come speak, then you'll forfeit your time.
Angelinos in Van Nuys, Donna, first speaker says, open video in Van Nuys. Out to you, Van Nuys. And the word comes from the old Persian word, nava. Nava, nava. Why? For we need a new chief of police. I was there this morning in the meeting, speaking on behalf of you, the public, public interests. And then again, I say to all of you, that LAPD rank-and-file must get a committed raise so they can participate like you, Chief Beck, for five years of a better pay scale for their families, and more so, their children. So nava, nava, nava. New, new, new. For I, Batman, have spoken, and you, Herman, you know it. Batman speaks on behalf of public interest. Public interest. And yet, shrimp boy, sorry, Mr. Speaker there, gets upset at the public speakers during public comment. I don't appreciate that we cannot fix our streets. Look at the crowd. Do you want your fixed streets?
He should, he should speak to the council. Okay, now you're disrupting the meeting, so if you're going to stick to...
I'm on topic, sir, it's public comment.
That's right. Yes, it is. Address this body and not the rest of the audience.
Violation of the Brown Act, right? Am I wrong?
Dress this body and not the rest of the audience.
So go on to speak. You have a right to fix our streets, City of Los Angeles. Fix our sidewalks, fix our parkways. For the people behind me, demand action. Don't forget, special election, L.A. USD vote, not for Alex Johnson. Hurrah, Mr. Big Ears.
Okay. First of all, we have some guests here. These people, they're demanding things that need to be done. Give it to them, okay? Because they're out there, you know, doing the work. Now, across the street, we have a police chief that submitted a letter, and he wants to have another five years as the police chief. And we got a leader of the Los Angeles Police Commission that arranged a sale of a horse for the chief's daughter. And he's not recusing himself from the panel. How about that, huh? Let's give corruption a hand. Corruption, corruption is the lifeblood of America. Chicago, shout-out corruption. New York, shout-out corruption. Beijing, shout-out corruption. And that's what it's all about. Alls you have to do is you just need $500,000, and you could sit on the City Council. Because $500,000 becomes a million five with matching funds, see? And then you can sit there for 12 years, and then after your 12 years, you can become a lobbyist. It's great. Now, what does that do for the rest of us? If you're living in the city, you break your cars over the potholes, too damn bad. You get an increase in your DWP bills, too bad. So, to all the kids out there, look at me. Look how fucked up I look. So, don't do it like me. Become corrupt. Join the City Hall Corruption. Thank you.
All right, we're going to ask... We don't, we don't, we're trying to keep, keep the voices down here. Applaud or boo speakers, public comment speakers. We want them to ensure that we can get all of the public comment cards. If you wish to do that, we only have 15 total minutes for public comment scheduled on the agenda. I'd like to go over so we can get through all these cards that showed up here today. So I leave that to you. We actually have technically two minutes left of the entire allotted time for general public comment. I'd like to give the rest of the speakers a total of two minutes each, so therefore, if we can ensure that we run efficiently, I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. We're going to go well over our time, and I don't want to cut anybody off that took the time to come here today, and show respect to all the folks that did come here. With that, John Walsh. And again, that extends to Mr. Herman as well.
JohnWalshPodding@HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems is a point of order. When this was full of cop union, almost every single one of them who was white, they screamed and loud and applauded, and you never stopped them. When the people over here are minorities, you tell them to shut up. You are a white man. No greater insult than I make than that.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead, if, we're going to go ahead, wait, hold your time. I'm going to hold your time. So again, I'm going to try to get through and allow time for each speaker that came here today. We still have a number of speaker cards before us, and we have 53 seconds total left of the 15 minutes allocated for general public comment. We're going to extend that time and go beyond that if we can get through it. So I want to make sure that everybody's heard that filled out a card. So if you want to stick to general public comment, please do so. Go ahead.
You used up about five of our minutes. Okay, the commissioner, the white boy commissioner is over there. He's going to get, it's a slam dunk, he's going to go and, I spoke now in front of you, it doesn't take any courage to say to you that the mayor is being blackmailed because of his boyfriend by the LAPD chief so he can get his five years. But I went over there and said it man-to-man to his face. I don't talk behind anyone's back. We've got the worst mayor, one-term Garcetti, he's interested mostly, you know, in his three-way marriage. Vote for George McKenna. Check to see whether you can go out and vote. And I'm telling you right now, he's going to win. L.A. Times has been doing some great stories ever since the UCLA flood. This whole city is falling apart. The only thing that will stop this city from falling apart are working people like the people behind me, not the corrupt, their supervisors and the corrupt L.A., the corrupt City Council and the corrupt mayor. HollywoodHighlands.org for the information, @HollywoodDems, you'll find everything. I've been a member of a union since 1974. These are the great people. Applaud yourselves, see what happens. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Don Ward, the next speaker, Don Ward, followed by Doris Weston, Savannah Robinson, David Jackson. If the three other speakers want to come behind the second set of velvet ropes, they can get ready to come up and speak. It'll be Doris, Savannah, and David, as I just called. There's a second set of velvet ropes, if you can line up in that order. And once I called your name, and if you're not there, you might have left, so we'll go on to the next names after that. Mr. Ward, good to see you.
Good to see you too, Mr. Englander. I just wanted to address the council and notify the council that today I dropped off more than 600 signatures in favor of option three for the Hyperion Bridge. And I'm very excited to do that because we've also come to a decision with the Hyperion Bridge civilian advisory committee. The vote was six to three in favor of option three, which gives us bike lanes, two ADA-compliant sidewalks to the L.A. River for the first time in the history of the region. And it's very exciting because moving forward generations from now, people will be able to get to the L.A. River safely by bike, by walking, and by car. There's going to be a billion dollars invested in the L.A. River coming in the next few years. So there's going to be an attraction there for people to, for recreation. And this is good news for all, and we're hoping that all of you can support this moving forward. So look for it on your radar in the next coming months. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Doris Weston, and I've been a crossing guard for over 28 years. I love my work. I love my job, and I love protecting the children who we cross every single morning. Today is our first day back at school, and some of us have took on double duties to be here today. As you look out into the audience, you see all these orange hats. We represent... We represent the City of Los Angeles Crossing Guards. We are here to impress upon the City Council, this is not just our elementary schools, we need crossing guards, but middle school students too. We are here to, we're here to tell our elect leaders that having the lowest number of crossing guards in recent history is something to be proud of, but rather ashamed of. We hope that you take a look at us, go home and talk to your children, ask them, do they know anything about crossing guards? Because I believe that crossing guards save lives every day. Let's not go without a crossing guard, because the life you save may be a member of your own family.
Good morning. My name is Savannah Robinson, and I also am here for the Crossing Guard Service. To reinfere what Doris has said, I'm here because we're taking away the bonus that the Crossing Guards have, which is $15.86 an hour, which totals $317.20 a month. And we are the lowest paid in the City of Los Angeles. I think that we do a great service for the City of Los Angeles for taking care of your children. Some of you have children or grandchildren, and we protect them. And I think we should be protected also. And I think... Excuse me. I also think we need to hire more crossing guards to help take care. And if we have any money left, I think we should get a raise. I know that's funny, but I think so. And I thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is David Jackson. I've been a crossing guard for over 16 years. March 27, I was ran over. A car hit me, knocked me 20 feet from inside the crosswalk. I done had six surgeries in three years, going on number seven. All right? But that's enough about me. We need to protect the kids. If you want someone to come to work, just like you guys come to work, you ask for a fairly wage. That's all we doing. We ain't asking for nothing else. Some of us are chucked away from going to the nearest, what we call the county building, public assistance, knocking on the door for food stamps. But we find ourselves above that, and we deserve above that. I'm proud, I'm proud to say I'm a city employee for the last 16 years. And I know some people behind me, they are. Give us a chance and let us keep the bonus hours and hire some more, and give us a little protection out there. Because I had my, my, uh, 20, my 20-year-old daughter. My son came home from the Navy, the day, a couple of days or whatever I got here. He looked at me and said, Dad, you going to be all right? I said, yeah. To see a soldier with tears in his eyes and say, man, you take the same deed as we do in the Marines and the Navy. And I said, he said, are you planning to go back? I get that from a lot of my coworkers. Yeah, because first of all, I'm a city employee. Second, I'm a parent. And I learned how to be a crossing guard from a crossing guard that was on, in front of my house, watching her cross the kid. And the first things first, is city. I had, a couple of years ago, some people behind me probably remember, we had, we're going to say a supervisor said, we will stick with you long as you do right. All of us then did right, but some of us did wrong.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, your time is up on that. But with that, I want to remind everybody, because we have to give everybody equal, equal time, and those are the rules if we extend it for one. When you're clapping and they're pausing, you're eating the speaker's time. So it's up to you, but I just, that's why I reiterate it. So, but thank you very much. Thank you. The next speaker, please. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service.
National Action Network, I stand with these crossing guards, and I'm going to give you some time back. On Fourth Avenue at Angeles Mesa Elementary School, I witnessed a young man being struck by a car, because there was no crossing guards. I think it's deplorable, and it's really a shame that we do not have enough to protect our children. These are our children. If you're talking about children of the future, these are our children. We urge you as our elected officials to just do this, and I'm through. Do the right thing.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Parisi, and I'm the Chair of the Coalition of L.A. City Unions. And I am so proud today to stand with the 363 crossing guards who serve our communities every day. Today is the first day of school in L.A. USD, and we came to give you an early report card. And let me say, honorable council members, you're not doing well. Eight, in 2008, we had over 576 crossing guards. We have reduced that number by 37%. What does that mean? That means over 160 schools are no longer being provided the safe and secure passage to school each and every day. That is an issue that matters each and every day in the lives of so many children in our city. This is a service that needs restoration, and it needs expansion. In addition to the 160 school sites that the Department of Transportation has determined need to be serviced by crossing guards, there are over 85 middle schools who receive no crossing guard services. These children are at risk as well. Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors recently decided to provide crossing guard services to middle schools in the county areas. No such services are appl... No such services are applied in Los Angeles. Most significantly, it's important for you to know that these workers, who earn a little over $13,000 a year, have by fiat had their wages cut by over $300 a month. This action was a unilateral act by the CAO's office, ending a pay practice that had been in place for over 20 years to ensure that crossing guards work morning and afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. David Tokowski.
Mr. Tokowski, good to see you. Hi, good morning. David Tokowski, former board member of the LA Unified for 12 years. I don't know the details of your negotiations, and I'll leave that in your hands, because there are good people here at this table. There are police officers, former police officers, there are former school board members, there are parents of children in LA Unified and other schools on this board, this council. And I just think that you can bring some creativity of thought to this dilemma, whatever that dilemma your, your staff tells you. Bring the same sort of creativity that you bring to projects like the Millennial Project. Bring the same sort of creativity and incentives that you bring when you're trying to attract a football team. Bring the same type of creativity and intelligence that you bring when you try to solve problems with the Department of Water and Power, who my colleagues and I on the school board had to sue in order to get the right rate to be charged for our schools. To bring all of that, today is election day and the first day of school. It would have been nice if we start planning on how, like other cities, you go, you go to your League of Cities meetings, you see how other cities bring resources together with school districts through either user fees, parcel taxes, business improvement, or school improvement district. Nobody comes up with ideas like that. Use some of the creativity, get some resources. It's as American as apple pie. You can't wait till Tom Labons retires and make him the crossing guard of every school in the city, even though he has the energy to do so. So bring that creativity to bear. Use your wisdom as former police officers, school board members, and parents to solve what it seems to be a very simple problem. I know John Daisy's waiting in the lurks to take over the city now that the tide has turned with the new mayor, but don't let him take over the city. Please fix this problem.
On behalf of the Teamsters, local 9/11, and the crossing guards, Mr. David Shepherd is a crossing guard in the Valley. He's asked me to read a letter because he has a short day today and didn't want to leave his kids, so forgive me for reading. I have written this letter to, when I talked to him, he said he's from Chicago, he has two grandchildren. When he talks to his, when he sees the kids he crosses, he thinks of them as his grandchildren in Chicago. I've written this letter to address an employment crisis of which you may not be aware. The Department of Transportation's crossing guards bonus has been eliminated. The bonus pay is typically one or two hours per day, depending on school assignment. Crossing guards provide a valuable service, the safety of our children. It's part-time work performed by dedicated workers, many of whom are senior citizens. Why is this bonus important? Imagine that you're a crossing guard, working two shifts per day. Due to budget cuts, you've seen guards reduced, assignments changed, you are driving greater distances to fill in gaps so that some schools will have coverage. Without the bonus pay, you're grossing $40 a day, spending $8, $8 to $10 in gas, 25% of your wage, I think about 25% of your wage is going for gas. Please, we ask that you champion these workers, these services, this opportunity. We are watching, we are citizens, immigrants, parents, grandparents, and voters with various experience. Thank you so much. We'll be gone now. We'll go back to work.
Ms. Butcher. Julie? Good, good to see you back in the building. All right, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and wait for council chambers to, to clear out.
You keep on doing this with your children, grandchildren, and wait, wait.
If we could go ahead and recess the meeting until council chambers clears out and they have an opportunity to make them way out safely, we'll go ahead and do that.
Members, I'd like to make an announcement. I still get a letter from each of you, which may be receiving, a map of the City of Los Angeles, that's a 1921 city. Is this okay, Mr. City of San Antonio?
We're on recess now, right now, anyway.
Did I make it announced? I know, but should I say that I, did I get it announced? Is this getting announced, or am I violating the statute?
Go ahead and go back into open session. We were on recess, clearing council chambers, allowing them safe time to leave the chambers in a quiet manner. Okay, welcome back. We've got, we've completed general public comment. With that, item 22 is gonna be continued, I believe, until the next meeting?
Is that yours?
The next meeting, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Okay, so Friday? Or Friday? Friday. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue that item for Friday, August 15th. With that, that clears the desk.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. President. There's a request to reconsider item 1C and continue that matter for two weeks to August 26.
Okay, there's a request to continue, continue that item. That'll be the order without objection.
First council needs to vote on reconsideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That item is approved. That item is now before us for that reconsidered item for continuation. We'll open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, so that clears the desk. Do we have items for posting and referral?
Yes, and also, Mr. President, there's a request to send item 23 forthwith.
Okay, 23 forthwith without objection, that'll be the order. And the items for posting or referral will be posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Okay.
Love each other, just to let you know. LAFCO, Local Agency Formation Committee, map went around, look at it, if there's any interest that any of you have. I know Mr. Buscayino and I spoke, Mr. Englander spoke, Mr. Fuente spoke, let me know so I could put forth the study process on anything to do with LAFCO. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other announcements, we have adjourning motions. If everybody can please rise. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I'd like to take a moment to adjourn in the memory of Dr. Michael B. Preston, Professor Emeritus at Political Science Chair at USC, a friend of mine and a friend of our community. He succumbed to pancreatic cancer on July the 27th, less than a month after he was diagnosed. He was 80 years old. Born August the 20th, 1933, in Tyler, Texas, Preston was a third of six children. His father a plumber, mother a teacher. He received his doctorate from the University of California, Berkeley, and joined the USC faculty in 1986, after spending 13 years at the University of Illinois. Preston retired April 2013 and was considered an expert on racial and ethnic politics. His legacy is filled with teaching, service, and mentoring. In the late 80s, when I had the opportunity to meet him for the first time, Preston served as Chair of the Department of Political Science. Preston started the first course on black politics, and later led a key initiative shared by USC and the Office of the Provost on recruiting minority and women scholars. From 1989 to 95, Preston served as Chair of the Department of Political Science and served as the Director of the Center for Multi-Ethnic Transnational Studies at USC. As a specialist in American, urban, and black politics, Preston researched LA blacks and Latinos in politics in Los Angeles, dissecting political changes that have shaped the city since the early 80s, when Tom Bradley was mayor. He was a member of the USC University Club Board of Counselors from 2012, 2014, and a former board president from 1993 to 1994. These are only a fraction of his many accomplishments. He will be greatly missed, survived by, by his son, daughters, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. A memorial is set for 4:00 PM on August 16th at the USC Caruso Catholic Center on USC University Park Campus in Los Angeles, and he will be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Labonch.
Members, I ask you to adjourn in memory of Rick Kriever, who grew up in the San Fernando Valley, graduated from Notre Dame High School. He was the guy that people could always count on and enjoyed a successful career, including over a decade working at Valley Dodge. Rick was a volunteer, worked on behalf of the Van Nuys Police Division in the LAPDs for 17 years, recently has positioned as Vice President of the, for PALS. He was loved by his family, his wife Pam, and his five children and seven grandchildren. I ask you to adjourn in memory of Rick Kriever. Additionally, I ask you to adjourn in memory of George Nicola, who had such a stalwart career at KNX, born in Salinas, grew up in Salinas, went to Berkeley, started in television, then worked his way through radio, came back to Los Angeles when KNX was a mixed station and started the all-news format. By the way, the most powerful thing George Nicola did as a voice for all of Southern California was his editorials, which was a regular asset to our community. The voice of editorials was so important on issues that we have. He was a much-loved professional, longest-serving, 34 years, General Manager of any radio station in Los Angeles. He will be missed. He's survived by his wife Betty of 50 years, George Nicola. And lastly, I think we should adjourn in memory of Robin Williams, who gave the world so much joy. If you look at the clock, it's 11:25. To know that 24 hours and 20 minutes ago, something happened in his life that took his life, which is so sad. Growing up in this city, 20, 39 years ago, after the Ram games, we used to go up on Melrose to, to the Improv, and there would be Robin Williams on a Sunday night, just doing it. And to see someone who rose to such heights at such an early days, like seeing a band from your neighborhood play and make it. He surely made it, and all the joy that he brought to the world, I'm sorry, he didn't have all the joy that we need in the world. And it also calls out for more care and help for people who have challenges, and if they ever get to that point, that there's someone to help out. God bless Robin Williams and his family.
Thank you, Mr. Labonch, for all of those as well. And seeing no other adjourning motions, this council is adjourned. Be safe.